Okay, we're going to call the special meeting for Friday, June 27th, at 3 o'clock of the Newport City Council to order. Present, besides myself, we have Carter Finnegan on video conference, Andrew Touche is with us, John... Sorry. Manette? It's all those "et" words. John Manette is with us, Kevin Charbonneau is with us. Treasurer Jim Johnson is unavailable, so Stacy Therian has stepped in to be our note taker and clerk this afternoon. And we don't have any city staff with us. So, we have a light agenda, but fairly heavy topics. And Chip is joining us. Hold on just a second. Hi Chip, can you hear us?
Yes, you can.
Great. We're just getting started. So, we've also been joined by Chip Sterns, who is our consultant from Nemrick, who's been working with us on finances. So, I was just saying we have a relatively light number of items on the agenda, but several of them are pretty significant. So, let's take the consent agenda. You will notice that in the consent agenda, we have minutes from our last meeting on June 16th, two sets of AP warrants for the 20th and the 24th of June, two sets of PR warrants for the 12th and the 26th, because Stacy and I miscommunicated about the 12th and didn't have them at the last meeting. So, we're doubling back to grab those. And then, one fairly standard-looking special event liquor license kind of request from Willie Stevens that's been in your packet as well. And then, I pulled two vendor permits for further conversation, so they are not part of the consent agenda. Those are the two from Ryan Staples and David Montague. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? Anything from the community? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Thank you, Carter. I'll try and remember to pause. Any opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion carries. So, the next item on the agenda is one that I pulled from the consent agenda and explained to the council why I was doing it at the last meeting. And that was... I'm going to just pull it out here, so we have that. You may want to pull it. It's the Ryan Staples... I think there was another name on that one. Yes. Chris Ward request for their short yellow bus. And what they were requesting was a permit to operate the bus over in the Gardner Park area near the gazebo, basically somewhere between four and six days a week for the summer. So, I just want to kind of give some background on this. I've actually done a lot of thinking about this the last few days. The reason that we pulled it is that it felt like it was outside of the standard request that we've been getting for vendor permits. And in general, vendor permits come to us in a way that meets usually three different criteria. One, is it tied to a special event? Two, is it more than three days in duration? It's actually four things. Three, are they taking the vehicle home every night? And four, are there more than 12 occurrences in the year? I can recite those four things now, but I could not tell you where to go and find a stated policy that says that at this point anywhere. So, we have a challenge, which is that we have had kind of, you know, a non-written understanding about how this works. And we haven't worried too much about the enforcement of it up till now. We've had, in my judgment, a significantly larger number of requests coming for food truck carts, for food truck vendors in particular. And I've actually been around and hanging around the office more the last few months. So, I've heard a number of interactions that our zoning administrator, Frank Chini, has had when people think that they're going to be outside, when it's fairly obvious they're going to be outside of one of those, or when it's on private property. So, I want to state what the understanding has been around private property, which is written into our zoning, or at least it's in the zoning that's being considered right now. I don't know if quite where it is in the old version or the new version. But we've had a consistent policy that is easy to articulate and easy to document that says that if you're on private property, basically if you're operating, it's the same criteria, and if you're going to be more outside of that criteria, if you're going to not take it home every night, or if you're going to be more than three days in a row, everything except the event, if you're going to do more than 12 in a year, then Frank's habit has been to say to the person applying, "That's really not a vendor permit you're seeking. That's a permit for operating a business. And you need to work with the owner of the property if you're not the owner and do a business application for that," which is not particularly expensive or onerous. It just says, "We recognize that you're setting up here longer term." So, there appears to be clarity about what we say on the private property side, but lack of clarity on the public property side. And the reason that... There were several people actually who flagged this one for me, and I had already had a question about it when it was flagged. The primary concern that I have is that on public land, it feels different to me, qualitatively different, to say you can be there for an extended period of time. You know, if we... I mean, just think about kind of what could easily become a runaway scenario here if you had six, or eight, or a dozen people who all wanted kind of indefinite ability to set up their food truck on Newport-owned property whenever they feel like it, right? And we don't... All we would really govern, I suppose, is the ability to say, "Yes, you can set up in this part of the park," or "No, you can't set up over there," right? So, it just feels problematic for that reason. It further feels problematic to me because we've got a situation in which, you know, we have businesses, bricks-and-mortar businesses, that are paying property taxes at a considerably higher rate than what we charge for a vendor permit, who in effect would then be competing with a steady business on city-owned property right across the street. So, that felt uncomfortable to me, too. So, I'm going to say one more piece of this, and then I really want to just hear what y'all in council have to say about this and kind of what you think. The challenge that we have right now... I've had a conversation with Ryan. It was a very reasonable conversation. He basically said, "Look, I thought I was meeting all of the requirements as best I could understand them. I've been to do all the other permits at the state level. I've done everything I need to do. I've invested a heck of a lot of money, and I had a plan to set up for the summer on the assumption that it wasn't going to be a problem. So, it feels really challenging at this point if you say, 'I can't set up.'" And to be fair to him, it's true that if we had been inconsistently or non-definitionally allowing these permits to happen, if we haven't been clear what the policy is, and there's no clear enforcement of it, then it seems like we bear some responsibility for this, too. Frank had actually, about a year ago, based on what's in the zoning laws, had drafted something that we could potentially use as a policy that kind of lays out those criteria. But it hadn't gone anywhere yet. And so, what I would like us to consider, and I could easily be overruled by all of you on this one, really. I'm looking for your guidance. My inclination would be to try and meet Ryan and Christopher halfway and offer them a permit with the understanding that their desire to do that operation is good for the month of July, and that during the month of July, we will be creating a clear policy that the council will consider before the end of the month, and that following the month of July, their permit continues, but it would continue under the guidelines that we approve over the next month for that new policy. Does that make sense? So, we would basically say, yes, it's appropriate, with some caveats, like I've already had a conversation with Ryan about not setting up over at the farmer's market without coordinating with them and paying their fee, right? If he wants to set up over there on a Wednesday or Saturday, we have clearly had a practice that the farmer's market, Judy and Carl Sick, control that process. So, we would expect him to be respectful of that like everyone else and not to set up over there without paying whatever fee they have and coordinating with them. But otherwise, that we would let him set up and try what he wants to try for the next four weeks, basically, while we take the time to write the policy clearly, put it on the website, make it clear what we do. And I think at that point, we should also look at this ancient application, which I have found infuriating ever since I came into Newport downtown development, and create a way that people can apply online, which is not rocket science. There ought to be an easy way to fill out your form online and not have to come in, get the paper, fill it out, pay it in person, whatever. We can work on that stuff. So, that would be the halfway measure that I think could be reasonably taken, unless the council says, "No, it's just an inappropriate request, regardless of whether we've been foggy." And I think that would be well within our rights. Just because we haven't been entirely consistent doesn't mean we couldn't make that decision now. I think that's everything I wanted to get out of the table, except I'll just mention that the David Montague request is kind of halfway in between, in my judgment. It asks for the ability to set up an enclosed trailer to do chips and hamburgers and hot dogs and that kind of stuff for basically all softball season, like for all the games that are taking place. We've had a habit of saying yes to those, and I'm not really actually saying that I don't think we should continue to. So, I just want to mention that that one felt like it could turn out to be more than 12 occurrences. So, I thought we should just highlight that that's also potentially outside of... Something we would want to look at in our policy.
So, that would set up on the park side, or in the park?
That's what I picture, over next to the softball fields where others have done it in the past, yeah. But I think he's asking not to do it for one tournament or one game. I think he's requesting.
Backing up to the other one. What other conflicts are there for the use of that space?
Farm to school.
We see the farm to school there. That's the one we thought of. And then, concert band, and there are special events there as well.
I don't know. Does anybody know about the farm to school, like how often they're using it through the summer?
Every Thursday. But this year, yesterday was their first one, and they were actually in the park.
For their event?
But not usually.
No, that's right.
They had an event yesterday. Normally, they're where the farmer's market is.
During what time?
Probably 7:00 in the morning to something like 3:00. And they provide education, education, kids' activities.
It'd be fine with me to carve out an exception for that one, too. You know what?
Yeah, there once a week?
Yeah. It seems a little tight to have, quote, junk food.
Yeah, I agree. I can see why that could be a conflict.
Super education.
So, go ahead, Andrew.
I think if we're clear with the recommendation and can kick out the farmer's market and the Thursday...
The farm to school.
The farm to school event on Thursdays. And I understand that they're not essentially welcome there during those times without complying with the fees and dues that are required.
And that you're comfortable with my suggestion that it would be for a month?
Yes.
That we'd say, "You've got this permission to do for the month of July. We'll be reconsidering the policy."
Also, this, the dues associated?
Yeah.
Some say weekend, and I know that's weekend events, but like Dave Montague's runs through the weekend, every weekend.
Right.
Which is an additional fee. So, I don't know where, you know, they do the six month, but the weekends are more, you know, he's there during the weekend. So, it would be more than the six-month fee if he was to be there for, you know, more than four weekends, or, you know, three weekends.
My understanding... Go ahead, Carter. Did you want to say something? Okay. My understanding actually is that each of these kind of step up, you can choose to do a weekend permit. A monthly permit would include all the weekends. A six-month permit would include all the times in that time, right? And a year-long permit for $300 would include everything. So, I think if we granted the permit request, I think both are requesting a six-month, yes, we'd be asking them for $200 with the understanding that the terms will be defined with whatever new policy we create at the end of July, that they'll be bound by that new policy.
I just had one other thought. I know that Judy has controlled the market to its advantage over many, many years. And I know that she tries not to bring in an additional person who will compete with somebody who's already there. So, I mean, you can only sell so many of X's. And I just don't know whether or not what is going to be sold by the yellow truck.
She's spoken to him.
Yeah, it kind of doesn't matter, because what we're saying, if we follow this path that we're leading toward, we'd be saying basically that if he wants to serve on Wednesdays and Saturdays, it would be at the discretion of Judy and Carl.
Okay. It will be as part of the market.
As part of the market, and they...
They'll sit him and the front gate separately.
Well, he might... Wherever they want to sit him. I mean, they would work that out.
They decide that.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, Jennifer?
So, is there any historical precedent of the council issuing a permit for like the six months, you know, in some, you know, more unbridled way? I mean, my concern is, when I heard you introduce the topic, you stated that this man had made substantial financial investment, right? Was under the impression that based on the terms and conditions of the existing application process and criteria that needed to be met, that he was in compliance. I just wonder if we're going to do a midstream change in that policy and change those terms and conditions in order to be issued a permit, if he's going to try to come back at the city for his investment costs.
No. I mean, we have nothing to do with his investment. If he did, it would be, in my judgment, it would be a capricious charge, and I don't hear him threatening anything like that. What all I'm saying is, you know, he's saying he's made a substantial investment. This is more complicated than he thought it was going to be. Can we not shut him down immediately? And I think that's a fair request, and I think this would be a reasonable response to it. You know, the only other way we might want to handle this is, you know, maybe we say, "For $100, you can have a permit for a month," right? And then, come back to us in August. And if you like the terms of the new one, you can apply for another six-month permit at that point. That might even be clearer, because we have a one-month, you know, a $100 one-month way of doing that. So, if you'd rather do it that way to keep it clean, that certainly seems reasonable, too.
I'm just jumping in. The staff are there, because somebody was going to talk. So, feel free to correct me in manners in this format. But the things that stand out to me with the criteria, I wanted to know more about two things, which is both of these applications and their permanence piece. As far as the four things you named, it's more about if they're moving and all the things associated with that, like if they're able to be flexible with the folks that run the farmer's market. And then, also the other piece of learning more about how Frank has drafted this criteria policy and what that looks like and what the normal, unhindered by this new, for these two applicants, like what was the path forward with that? And when could we have naturally expected that? Because this form, you spoke a lot about it, but there's not much information to really go off of, along with all the other points you brought up. And if I'm playing this, then I know, but I apologize. And so, yeah, main piece for Frank... Or, sorry, break what you talked about, what Frank has drafted and when that would come into play, and it would be brought in a more formal manner.
Yeah, so I think I hear two questions in there, and I may have misunderstood, Carter, but I have spoken with Ryan, and he assures me that the bus would go home every night. So, it would meet that criteria. It would not be a permanent location over there in that sense. So, that's the first thing. I do think that what we're really saying is that Frank and I would draft some language based on work he did last year and present it at the July 7th council meeting, the regular council meeting on the 7th, for the council's consideration and for community comment. And then, we could either take action right away that night, or if we have more questions, we've got plenty of time to look at it for two more weeks and still pass something by the end of the month. And there are some substantive questions in this that I don't fully understand. I don't know what my own answers would be right now about, you know, like is 12 a reasonable number occurrences in a year? You know, just because that's what we've said on private land doesn't mean that's what we would have to say publicly under Newport land. So, I think there are some questions that could easily come up as we consider this together. Does that answer the questions you were raising?
Yes, yes. And, sorry, there's like feedback, so I'm going to mute you guys. Chinese tongue, basically. The comment period, I think, would be great with the public, because I think that because this has been not really defined or there's been a rough idea, I would, I really think this is a good opportunity to talk about a vendor permit on public land and also talk about how there are some vacancies on downtown. You know, there are some buildings, and how can maybe we merge or talk about these opportunities? But ultimately, I think it's great. I like local businesses. I like the idea of somebody setting up and selling, slinging some hot dogs for softball. Like, that makes my heart happy. But, yeah, I think because there isn't been nothing that's stone for us to point to, I would like to involve the community and talk about this in a more formal manner. So, definitely, Art should work with this idea. And I'd like to hear others on what you'd like to do with the two permits. But, yeah, it's my two cents.
Got it. Okay, yeah, Helen?
It would also be important to include...
You speak up.
Sorry. It would be important to include places like T-Bar Hoagies, because it will be direct competition for them. And they should have as much of a voice as those of us who say, "Yeah, I'd love a cheap burger." Why not?
Yeah, Tina's been much on my mind as I've been thinking about this. It's literally across the street from her two businesses.
Exactly. And it's had an impact before when they've been there.
Yeah. Okay, so if it's okay with you all, I'm inclined to be a little heavy-handed and just make some motions that would invite you to make a motion. Make, craft some language that would invite a motion. Is that sound all right? So, I think we could break this down into three parts. The first is, I would welcome a motion to grant a one-month permit for $100 to Ryan Staples and Christopher Ward to set up near the gazebo as their permit requests, with the understanding that they will coordinate with Judy and Carl Sick and the farmer's market, and that the farmer's market folks have the first, have the ultimate say about whether or not they are welcome in that process or not. And secondly, that they will not set up at a time that competes with Farm to School's lunchbox truck on Thursdays. So, it's basically saying that there are four days a week that they can operate there unrestricted, and that possibly they could add the farmer's market days that they can work it out with the farmer's market. If that motion sounds appropriate, I'd welcome it.
I'll make that motion.
It's okay. So, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Anybody want to try and fine-tune it before we vote on it? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Oh, he did it again, Carter. I'm so sorry. Got your aye, and...
Aye.
I hear no nays, so that motion passes. And Stacy, do you think you caught my language? I was going... I was kind of making it up as I went along. Are you okay with it?
I've been taken off, really.
That's right. You got it. Okay. All right, so that's the first one. Then, the second one I would do is, I would welcome a motion to simply approve the request by David Montague for a six-month permit to operate during the softball games over on the baseball field of the side of the, you know, the field side of the park.
Should he work with Mike so that he sets up the location? It's not taking him to the park.
Yeah, we can... I think we can just work that out. Mike's been pretty good about working with folks like that.
I'll make that one.
Okay, I've got a motion from Andrew, a second from Kevin. I have a motion and a second. Any adjustments you want to make to that one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, nay? Okay, that motion passes. And I have a third one, which is, I would welcome a motion for the council to request that the mayor and zoning administrator bring a draft of a policy for consideration at the regular meeting on July 7th, with the understanding that we will allow for comment that night and two weeks of public comment before the council takes final action on the 19th, whatever that is, 19th maybe? I think it's July 19th is our second meeting.
It's a motion from Saturday.
21st.
21st, thank you. I've got a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and a third. You can say Andrew and John on that one. Carter has to second before we get the words out of our mouth in order to get counted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Let me run along. We have in the packet the terms for a loan from Pasumsek Bank for up to $53,917, purpose of which is to purchase a new police department cruiser that is waiting for us to pick it up in Burlington right now. It's a three-year note at 4.97% interest fixed, monthly payments of $1,615.21. And what I understand is that it has been our habit, basically, to turn over one police vehicle per year. And this one is seven years old, so we're at the end of its useful life. That loan has been... The indication from Pasumsek is that they would be happy to write that note upon our approval for it. Anybody want to offer me a motion on that one?
I'll make that motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Motion to approve?
The percentage has been over 50%.
Great, thank you. All right. And so, we'll just assume that that will be over the mayor's signature for that one, I think. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Do I have any comments from the community? Lori, and then Jennifer.
Is that in the budget?
Yes. It's in the budget. Yeah, it's in the budget.
Just out of curiosity, what's being done with the old one? Is it being traded in, or can we sell it for something?
Yeah. Travis wrote me a note about that. I apologize, I don't have it at my fingertips. There's some company where we regularly sell these $60,000-plus vehicles for like four grand to a company that buys old police cruisers. I think it's in Chicago. So, yes, the same thing will happen for the disposition that has other processes. How is that an "I want to buy the old police cruiser"?
One, yes. Two, is it possible to get another year out of one of the vehicles? I mean, are we having mechanical issues or anything like that? Just because I have to ask the question from a finance standpoint, is this a reasonable expense at this point?
It's a good question. I think the answer for today that I would offer is that it's been the experience of the PD that at seven, eight years, these things begin to cost us considerably more money. And so, it makes sense to let them go. I think that's a very worthwhile conversation to have, but probably not one we should have about a vehicle we ordered a long time ago that's waiting for us to pick it up. So, at this point, I think we probably need to move ahead with this one. And then, when we're talking about budgeting, come back to a conversation that's more substantive about it. And I think it's a good question. And then, we can ask if you could buy the next one. I have a motion and a second. Any further comment from members of council? Oh, yeah, I had a motion. Who made the motion? Andrew and John seconded. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any...
Aye.
I waited, Carter, I remembered that time. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. And Chip is with us. Now we get to the two items that really were the, the reason for the urgency in calling a special meeting. And I'm thinking actually that it might be helpful, Chip, if you could speak to the first one. I did create a memo that I believe you've seen that went into the packet, though I had to resubmit the packet 24 hours after I did the first one to get it in there. But it's, it's available for the public, but I wonder if, Chip, if you could just speak to this question, item number six regarding the actions that you and I took. Let's see, yeah, six is the items that we made decisions on this week around the loan, the payoff of the loan line of credit. And I think we've got in there the recommendation from you about unobligating committed funds. So you want to just speak to both of those and then we'll see what questions are?
Sure. So as a result of a conversation with city council that was made abundantly clear that the charter does not allow refinancing a line of credit by getting another line of credit. And so as a result of city council saying, "You must first, with your own resources, pay off the existing line of credit and then apply for a new line of credit." As a result of looking at available cash resources, we did not have $1.8 million available unless we actually utilized cash that was held in a separate account that has been known as the Walmart account. And so through the city treasurer, mayor, and me, who has absolutely no authority, we decided that we would take $350,000 and order approximately $385,000 from a Walmart cash account, move it to the Pesumsik checking account so that we would have enough resources to pay off the interest and the $1.8 million on that line of credit. This action was taken and completed yesterday. So the good news is, from the attorney's standpoint, we have done what they obligated, said we were obligated to do. The bad news is, we don't have enough cash to pay the bills now. So those actions are taking place. The obligation of the Walmart balance has not been lost in this transaction. Our intention is, when we get our new line of credit, we will draw on that and put the Walmart $350,000 back into that account. Therefore, simply using that as a resource to meet our obligations. That's the first activity. Then, secondary to that, when we brought up closing the cash asset restricted money in water and sewer, I'm quite sure I had mentioned, I might be back to you to say, "Let's close out the commitment because we actually are still in a condition where we don't have the cash." And when the CPAs come for a June 30 snapshot, I would like it not to reflect that you have commitments for large sums of money for which you do not have the money. And so within the memo that I have written for Rick to provide to you was a suggested motion to uncommit those funds. I would say you don't have to read the amounts of money necessarily, but for the same reason that we moved the cash to meet the obligation of water and sewer owing the general fund, then we have to also relieve our restrictions on these committed amounts of money for which we don't have the money.
Thank you, Chip. So Chip's referring to the memo in the packet that was available to the folks in the community as well, that was, the title of which was "Second Memo for Council Regarding," in bold, and it's, it was drafted two days ago on June 25th. And the second page of that memo, as it prints on paper, is the one that Chip is really referring to that invites a motion to uncommit the sewer and water reserves for the wastewater treatment facility, the Backer's Thieving Fund, Water Tower Reserve, the Water Tower Fund Replacement Reservoir, I'm not sure what that one is, Replacement Reserve, and the Reservoir Cover Reserve. Those five items. So I, I welcome questions about what it is that Chip is proposing that we do here before we put a motion on the table. And I'm going to take questions from the council first.
So that one you spoke of, Rick, is the water treatment facility, is that correct?
Yes, thank you. The replacement reserve for the water, water treatment facility, thank you. So basically, you know, what, what I understand Chip to be saying is that these, these funds that show in, show a negative balance at this point, that money was spent on water or sewer. It's not, you know, they were spending the appropriate enterprise funds, enterprise budgets, but there's no money there to meet these obligations. So if we were to take this action this afternoon, like so many other actions we've taken in the last three months, we're going to have to come back to this conversation over the coming year and talk about what we do to begin to create long-term financial planning again for both the water and sewer side and the operations budget side.
Rick, do you have any, or anybody in the council, or in the public, who is in this room, have an idea of how we can track and, and replace or supplement? I don't know the right verbiage because some of these are, you know, infrastructure needs. There's reasons that this, these exist before we say, "Okay, I, I completely understand the logic, but, you know, is there any way to track or who does this fall within the city to see that we do return to this?" Because we'll have lots of big conversations coming up and I just don't want it to get lost in the melee or forgotten about because I, I, yeah, all in there. Yeah, what are ways that we can come back to this or who does it fall on to do?
Yeah, Carter, I think the answer to that is that with this action, we would ask you, because you've been keeping up our, our spreadsheet of items that we're going to talk about, you know, we, we figure out a time that we want to take this on sometime over the course of the next calendar, the next fiscal year, somewhere probably in the midst of the budgeting process, it would be healthy to have that conversation.
Okay.
And honestly, I'll just say, I don't think we're done with this yet because we have one more item like this that we still haven't dealt with. And that is the fact that the fiscal year '25, '26 budget also has some funds that we designated as funding we were going to put away for future spending. And we're going to, I think, have to come back to that fiscal year '25, '26 budget and make sure that we're going to make that budget balance for the end of the year. And we already know we have a $220,000 error that we made in budgeting that's going to bring, means we're going to bring in $220,000 less if we keep the property tax rate we've already set. We know we've created a $220,000 deficit for that budget. So we're going to have to come back sometime soon to talk about, you know, do we want to raise the tax rate slightly in order to make sure that we bring in that $220,000 this year? Or do we want to uncommit funding that we said we would set aside? Or do we want to do some combination and look at other things in that fiscal year '25, '26 budget as well? So I don't, this is yet another step in a, in an ongoing series of things that we're having to do to just try and kind of make sure we're being honest about everything before us.
Is there any...
Yeah. So I see some folks in the community who have questions, so let's go Lori and then Ian.
As I recall, at the wastewater meeting on, whatever night that was, Wednesday, there was conversation about this, as I recall, and it was as there, because these are wastewater, wastewater, you know, water and sewer, some of these, that they would also have to look at this to keep these things top of mind as well. So it kind of falls, I think enough people know about it that we're not going to lose sight of it.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll just point out that the other thing that Water and Sewer talked about the other night was, we included in the budget for water and sewer that we approved on April 30th when we set the new rates. We approved a 5% allocation for future capital expense and we still have an action to come back and consider about how to, how to appropriately set that money aside for that future capital expense. So we have in fact begun already to address the future challenges, at least on the water and sewer side. Ian?
The mention of using the Walmart account was never raised at the financial committee the other night, which was fairly recently. So that's something new. And I have never looked at the restrictions on the Walmart money, but over the years, people have, on the council have always said that that money should not come out of the Walmart account unless it's to be used for economic development since that was the purpose of them, Walmart compensating us in some way of the original $600,000 for maybe having had an effect upon our economic development. And now we're sort of going to use it even very short-term for, to pay off what we need to pay off for the end of the year. But in addition to that, so that's one concern I have, but in addition to that, when you say that now in order to come to some sort of, well, to pay off everything at the end of this year, that really is another $350,000 that's got to be paid back out of presumably the taxes that you're going to bring in. It's another $350,000 that was not budgeted in the budget for 2025 to 2026. It's not there. So you, you, you're going to, you start the end of next year down $350,000 that has to be paid back to the Walmart fund. So I'd like to know where we think we're going to get that $350,000 to pay back to Walmart fund? Which departments or where is the sacrifice going to be made?
So let me try and take those one at a time. You're absolutely right that a week ago at the finance team meeting, we did not discuss the potential need to use funds from the Walmart fund. And I've, I've actually written and apologized to the finance team because the, the timing of this meeting made it impossible to try and vet this idea with the finance team first. So I've, I've allowed as to how this was not ideal. I'd like the finance team to have been a part of it. On Wednesday, following meetings that we had on Tuesday with Pesumsik Bank and our attorneys, it became obvious that we really, we really had to pay off the line of credit this week in order for us to meet our legal obligation for that line of credit to be paid off by the end of fiscal year and that next year's line of credit of 2.725 million for cash flow purposes against anticipated taxes would then be a separate question. And so we've done that. We could have just paid off the line of credit and then held on to some bills and not paid them that we've already approved for a week or two and held our breath. Instead, what we said was, it feels more appropriate to use cash that we have on hand to make sure that we are meeting all of our end-of-year obligations. And in doing so, we have not released the city or the council, the council has not released the obligation for those funds. So the obligation remains even this week for the full $385,000 that remain in that fund. It's just that next week, we're going to take money against that line of credit and immediately put it back in that account. That's the intention.
You're going to be $350,000...
Actually, this is a good news thing, not a bad news thing, because if you look at the numbers that the finance team has been looking at for the last three weeks, it suggested that we were going to start the year $870,000 in the red. And in fact, we've done better than we were projecting we might in a worst-case scenario. And even if all of that $350,000 of Walmart money were to be used over the course of the next week, it would still be considerably better than the $870,000 projection we were using in our financial projecting. So we already had a projection for beginning this year with a loss that was written into our financial cash flow for the coming year. And this is simply a part of that projection and if anything, it makes it better, not worse, in my judgment. Chip, I don't know if that, I want to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn. Does that resonate with what you're, what you think?
No, I'd also, I would also add that the city council attorneys actually stated they have no knowledge of any requirement of any funds that the city has received being required to be held in a separate bank account for purpose. So specifically, I asked the attorneys in the meeting, "Do you feel it is inappropriate or okay to use the Walmart money for a two-week period to meet the city's obligation against the line of credit?" And both agreed it is absolutely reasonable to take that action to meet the obligations of the city. So I didn't, we didn't do this without first actually me directly asking the attorneys if they felt that would be appropriate for us to do at this time. And so it wasn't lightly taken and I feel we have the backing of the attorneys and should something come up and somebody feels it's out of line, they were well aware of what we were doing. And when we hung up in the video meeting, it took me less than three minutes to call Jim and say, "Okay, how quick can we do this?"
Yeah.
And how do you expect it to be paid back?
From the, from the new line of credit. The same way we would have paid back if we had, if we started the year with an $870,000 deficit, right? It's exactly, nothing about that has changed in any way from what we've been discussing as a finance team and as council for the last month. So I said to my wife when I went home that night, you know, it's the, the clear, the clear indication that we had to basically empty our bank account and pay off the line of credit on the expectation that we'll have a new line of credit a week from now, felt something akin to me to standing on the cliffs of Acapulco with a friend who was saying, "Well, both jump, you go first." So I mean, I do think that the bank, the other piece of news that you may not have gotten in all of this is that we did get news from the bank on Wednesday that the team that makes recommendations to the board at Pesumsik is recommending the course of action that we've laid out, both with this short-term loan and what we are discussing about warning of special meeting and the other loans to follow. Basically, that set of loans. We have not yet heard anything from the bank about, we haven't discussed anything with the bank about the short-term water tower loan that we're likely to need in the fall. That one's not on the table yet. But those first three, this one and the two that we're considering for a $1 million loan to cover the sewer deficit and a $1.8 million loan to cover the operating budget deficit, their, their board of directors is going to receive a full briefing on Wednesday morning from the team that is making a recommendation that they go ahead. So I'm going to hold their hand when I jump off the cliff, is basically what I'm going to do. Lori?
I have the same concern that Ian had initially, except something you said sort of turned it for me when you said we could have held invoices and waited a few weeks to pay them. And, and because we can't, per our charter, right, we, we can't get a lot of credit to pay off old...
Correct.
An old lot of credit. So we would have either had to have held $350,000 of invoices or use this money in the short term and then put it right back in. That's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah, and a combination, I'll come right to you, Joseph, a combination of two things has made this even possible. One is, I think we, Jim in particular, did a good job of projecting what the variety of expenses might be through the end of the year when we asked him for that two months ago. So we're not, as far as I can tell, Stacy's got something to surprise me with on Monday. We're not getting surprised by stuff that's going to blow us, blow this whole thing out of the water. But the second is that Chip began preparing the council for this well over two months ago with the process of consolidating all the cash we had in other accounts. And so that, over $800,000 from the other, besides the Walmart money that we consolidated is what gave us enough cash to actually make this payment this week. And I don't, honestly, I don't know what we would have done if we hadn't set up for that. Joseph?
Couple of things. The first one, I just want to be clear in my own mind because I'm going to write it and I don't want to get...
It'd be good for you to be clear.
Yeah. The money that's uncommitted from the sewer and water reserves, that is gone. That's theoretical.
It's been, it's been spent on other water and sewer operations.
No, but it's...
That's right.
It's not in your pocket someplace.
That's right.
Okay, great. The second thing about the Walmart funds, has anyone ever actually looked at the documents that came with that money?
I have not.
Okay, just...
I don't have it in front of me. But I'll just note again, what the attorneys have assured us is that the obligation regardless is real and all we're doing is, is using that money for a very short-term cash flow issue.
I, I covered this, I really shouldn't say it, but I'm going to say it anyway. I covered this, the only out... I covered this, the only obligation the city had from that money was not to oppose the Walmart. The money was given to provide development, but there was no contract that went with it.
That's actually really reassuring. Thank you for the information.
I think that there was a strategy to keep it from being spent to create that narrative. And yes, you know, when it was provided, what Jeff Davis said is, this is what it's for, but there was, there was no enforcement mechanism. You could have done whatever you wanted.
Having, having said all of that, I'm grateful that the money's been protected for this.
No, I understand, but that.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions before we get a motion on the table here? All right.
I just want, I just want to point out that as of right now, today, we have in the general fund checking account, in the financial system, However, in accounts payable, we have invoices of $562,665.50. So Laurie, we are in fact not paying bills.
Thank you, Chip. That's helpful. I had not looked at those numbers today. And I think there are still a few more bills that Stacy's going to put in front of me, right?
I'll be watching them about every two hours.
I'm glad somebody is. Thank you. That's what we're paying you the really big money for. All right. I would invite a motion that's crafted based on that paragraph at the top of the second page of Chip's, the memo that Chip and I created for you.
Well, move that we uncommit the sewer and water reserves, and I won't read them, but they're part of the motion. I think we should list them in the motion. If anybody wants me to, I'll read them.
Yeah, let's go ahead and read them.
They're all on paper.
Yep.
The wastewater treatment facility sinking reserve of $117,779.83. The vector sinking reserve of $266,105.69. The water tower reserve of $160,323.15. The wastewater treatment facility replacement reserve of $213,472.50. And the reservoir cover reserve of $55,303.12.
Thank you, John. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Can you tell us the total amount?
I'm sorry?
Could you say what the total is?
No, sorry, I don't have it. I mean, we can add it all up if you want, but I don't have it off the top of my.
I could give a rough number, about $812,983.12.
Thank you, Carter. Which should sound familiar to you because we took the money out of these accounts more than a month ago and put the money in the cash reserve without unobligating them. All we're doing now is unobligating them on the balance sheet. Right, Chip?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to the last thing. I've gotten information as recently as an hour and a half ago that actually changes some of the timing on this last one. But let me give you the background, which is that now that we've paid the line of credit, the next move is for us to secure the $2.725 million line of credit in anticipation of tax income that we will be depending on in cash flow for the coming year. And that loan has been, as I mentioned, approved by the recommending committee at Pasumsek Bank. It has not yet been considered by the board. So when I wrote this, I was still thinking that we would be asked to sign this document on Monday. But in fact, it will now, it'll be, then I was thinking that I was going to tell you that it was going to be something we would sign by DocuSign on Wednesday. But about an hour and a half or two hours ago, I received a letter from our attorneys stating that they believe that we should probably, that we not should, that we should take an action, we need to take an action as a council on a resolution to sign that document. That it's not, it's, it would be more appropriate for the council to act and then for all of us to sign than for us just to sign tonight or to sign each of our signatures. And the reason for that is that we don't have the actual loan document in front of us. So we can't approve our signatures today. All we can do is talk about it. So basically, what I'm saying is that today, I don't think there's an action that we're looking for here. It's just background with the, with the understanding that I may even have to warn another very brief special meeting for Wednesday afternoon or evening for us to approve the actual language of the, of the loan. And, and at that point, we sign it either if we're here in person or by DocuSign. There are a couple of things that I've clarified that I think would be helpful for you to know. Like last year's line of credit, this is a total borrowing limit of $2.725 million. That means even if we pay it down, it does not mean we now have that money to borrow again. It's not a revolving line. So if we, if we, let's say, what I think will happen is we will borrow almost the entire amount by the end of August to make it through the summer. If we start paying that back next fall, we will not be able to go back and borrow more money against this line of credit. We'll have to be living on other income that we are counting on in our cash flow document. So we projected that in our cash flow. But I just want to be really clear because our council last year operated under the mistaken impression that if we paid it down, we could then use it again. So that's not true. The second thing you should be clear about with this loan is that assuming the voters approve a $1.8 million loan to manage accumulated debt or deficit, accumulated deficit in the operating fund, if they approve that, when we take that loan, it is a condition of this loan, this line of credit, that the entire amount will be applied to the principal on this line of credit. So that loan to manage the accumulated deficit will go right into this, which is a good thing in my judgment because it pays down the interest that we'll be paying, right? It pays down the principal upon which we're paying interest. And then we'll be living on basically the $1 million loan that we'll take for the accumulated sewer deficit and tax income and any other income that we take in to make it from there through the end of the fiscal year. And our projections, Chip has looked at this pretty carefully because I've asked him, I'm a little nervous about this and I've asked him specifically several times. It's our judgment that we will be able to manage the rest of our cash flow throughout the year with that condition. So I just want to be clear that it will be written as a condition in that loan that the entire principal of the 1.8, the entire 1.8 of that future loan will go toward this principal. I feel like I could have been more clear about that. Do you have questions about it? No questions? Chip, do you want to?
To be clear.
Yep.
I want to be clear that the 1.8 and the $1 million are bond authority by public vote that the council hopes to warrant for a August 12th public vote, starting with a meeting until July 7th. So our cash flow doesn't work if the public denies both of those events.
Yep.
And so realize that should either one of those not pass, our cash flow, we may as well go work on a farm. So the big key there is that the 1.8 deficit, if not allowed to be funded over time, according to your charter and state statute, must be raised in taxes on the next tax bill. So you're stuck and it's like the old shell ad, you can pay me now or you can pay me later.
I'm thinking council members may have to put up lemonade stands in all our front yards. I don't mean to make light of it, except honest to God, we need some sense of humor in here somewhere. So, well, I, Chip's absolutely right about that. I'm, I feel like we have got good numbers because of Chip's effort. And we've got a strategy that has been vetted by some people I really have grown to trust and appreciate on our finance team. And this is way more straightforward actually than I thought it was going to be three months ago. So I'm feeling pretty positive about the process. Anne?
I just want to, see, I don't think we're deciding anything today about the 1.8 million.
That's right.
But I, I will, I will say that in the document that was put out for June 24th, it says the finance deficit was created by miscalculation of the tax rate from 2018 to 2025. And that accounts for about 1.3 million when you add it up. So there's another $500,000. And what I don't hear at any time during all of these corrective actions that are being taken is an acknowledgement that sometime in the past, previous councils or previous managers have, have made serious errors way back in time. And there should be at least, as we go through this, an acknowledgement that all of this is occurring because of previous errors that have been made.
Yeah, I have no trouble acknowledging, again, I think, I'll just say it again, I, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the way you just stated that. It is absolutely true that in both the water and sewer budget and in the operating budget, there have been a series of errors or mistaken judgments, whatever language you choose, that I can't fully, I can't fully name. I don't think even Chip can fully understand exactly where they've come from yet. We know the big, the big ticket items at this point that helped to create them on both sides, right? We know on the water and sewer side, we were running an obvious deficit for years and we didn't touch the rates. And we all, and we know there were contributing factors to that deficit like the prison, I'm sorry about the prison, the Lich A, the end of the Lich A money, that being one example, right? And on the operating side, Chip has discovered this error in budgeting, which I really do think was made by mistake the first year and then just repeated year after year after that. I don't think anybody was doing anything nefarious. It was just a mistake that we all kept making repeatedly. So, and there's, I think you're right. By my calculation, there's probably another $500,000, $600,000 out there. And I don't know yet, but something happened somewhere. And folks weren't paying enough attention, in my judgment. Okay, yes, Hal and then Jennifer.
I just want to ask a quick question. Because of Walmart money, using, there is no development if there is no town. So I think using that is appropriate. My question is, couldn't we be more fiscally responsible by not drawing on a line of credit to replenish that until there is a need for those funds? Why encumber us with an additional $350,000 accruing interest until there is a need, knowing that at the end, maybe at the end of the year, we replenish it? But until there's a need to replenish it, can we not possibly just earmark potential funds so we're not encumbering ourselves inappropriately?
It's a great question, but I prefer not to take on today. I'd be happy for the financial task force to constantly discuss that one and, and come back with some thoughts and responses to it. I will note that of all the things we've done to uncommit funds, the one we have not yet talked, we have not discussed uncommitting those funds in any way. In fact, two councils in a row have committed those funds to the process of getting us through preparation for economic development. Both the previous council and this one have reiterated that. So, but I'm, I, it's anything, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of fiscal responsibility, anything and everything should be on the table at this point. And the reason we empowered a task force to make recommendations to council is to consider those items. Jennifer?
I want to go back to your statements in regard to the $1.8 million loan having to get put onto the line of credit as one of the terms or conditions. And the reason I want to revisit that is I am assuming, and this is my, I guess my question, that come this time next year, we're going to have to pay that loan, that line of credit off in its entirety.
Absolutely.
Before we can get another one.
Absolutely.
So I understand it's a juggling act to make sure you have enough cash in your coffers to pay your bills. But by the same token, you can't kick the can down the road and then find us at this time of year next year with the inability to pay it off and get another one. So, you know, it would seem that we're going to have to live lean and apply as much money throughout the year to pay that off so that we're not in a big crunch at this time of year next year. Because we're not going to have that extra cash from closing out those committed funds available to us next year. Because we've already done that. So that well's dry.
I think that's a true statement, all of what you said.
Yeah, so we're really going to need to be mindful to be paying that off as we go as much as possible without causing us to not make.
Well, and the way to do that is to recognize that this is a cash, a line of credit that is designed to be at zero. It's designed to be paid off a year from now. The only way to make that happen is to ensure that we are not deficit spending against our budget through the year. Which is why we've got Chip moving shortly, I hope, into conversations about how we're going to, we've already begun doing a pretty intensive look at our reporting that we're going to, that the council's going to be looking at every month in terms of up-to-date balance sheets. And we're also going to be looking at trying to streamline the general ledger over the next few months. Although I think that will help us more in the end for next year's budget than it will for this coming year's budget. But in any case, the council is absolutely going to have to stay on top of the question all year long about whether we are running a risk of deficit spending.
So then my second point was, last year we closed out, what my recollection was, was just under a $300,000 deficit. And could that explain part of the $500,000 that is kind of out there missing?
Maybe. Good question. Chip's going to tell us someday. Go ahead, Laurie.
Now, I was just going to hand the graph here. I don't know if Jennifer was talking about the 2.725 that has to be paid off by.
Yes.
Okay. Because I heard, I heard the 1.8.
No.
So it's the 2.75, yes, and I'm aware that the 2.75 has to be paid back fully.
In full by the end of the year, right?
Because the 1.8 is looking at possibly a 20-year.
It will be 10 to 20 years, depending on what we think we can manage in our budget in terms of principal and interest payments. That's right. Yeah. The whole point, I know this part's confusing, but because it's a condition of the line of credit, what we're really saying is I just want everybody to understand that if and when the voters approve that $1.8 million bond to, to deal with the accumulated deficit in operating, it's effectively already spoken for as a payment against this line LOC. Okay? Okay. Counsel, we got a lot of questions from the community. Do you all have any other comments or questions?
So the net line of credit then, assuming all of this works, is really about a million dollars.
After the $1.8 million payment.
Oh, and.
That's right.
After the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the vote on August 12th, we cannot take any action until 30 days.
After that.
If we, if we, if we recall a question. And so then typically by the two-week period after September 12th, we then may then execute the $1.8 million, sign the documents and turn around and reduce our line of credit will be the ultimate effect.
Yep. And I'll note that the, both the water and sewer and the finance task forces are going to have their hands full. Because as soon as we get through this question, we've got to go to work on the question of how we manage the bond that's already been approved by voters to pay for the water tower. And there, the challenges on that are that while the voters approved it, it was never actuated with the Vermont Bond Bank. So that means that we've missed the opportunity to be in the Vermont Bond Bank pool of August this year, which we were counting on, at least I was counting on, because we have to pay off the line of, the construction line of credit in October. So we're going to have a similar problem in October, which is that we can't, we can't. So we're going to have a similar problem in October, which is that we can't, we can't take the bond and pay off the line of credit and we also can't just extend the line of credit or even finance it, finance it with another short-term note without going to the voters. So there will have to be an item on the special election asking the voters for their approval to take another short-term note to bridge us to the anticipated bond income. And all of that's going to have to be worked out over the next two months really to get it all pulled together. And one of the things that Vermont Bond Bank is going to want in order to approve the long-term strategy of going to them for that money is a, they've told us already, we're going to have to have a five-year projection for cash flow for water and sewer, for water fund. So there's a lot of work to be done to get us through that set of questions. Okay?
So that question will also be part of the warning...
Yes.
Put out July 7th...
Yes.
And voted on August 12th.
Because if we don't, we will, we will be in violation of the charter when it comes time to pay off the construction line of credit. We'll have no way to do it. Ann?
There's just a footnote left over from the finance committee about that, which is we don't yet have all of the amount of money that is being, was spent to get us that water tower. And, and we need to have those numbers fully so that we know exactly how much is going to be owed in the end. Because we don't owe, the citizens of Newport do not owe the original $4.9 million. It was $4.9 million minus any grants and any offer money that we got. And it's also minus any money that wasn't needed.
That we never spent.
That, right. So we need to know those numbers also by, so that we can determine how much more we need in terms of a loan.
We will have to know those numbers, I'd say we don't have to know those numbers by August 12th or by July, whatever it is when we bought, July 7th. Because where that question's really going to hit us is how much it does the final bond that we arranged with the Vermont Bond Bank have to be for. So we have a little more time to get to that answer, thank goodness, because I don't think we can get it in two weeks. But by fall, as we work with the bond bank to work out the longer-term loan, we absolutely will have to know exactly how much money we spent on this project. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? So there's no action here, council, I don't think. But here's the process. I just wanted you all to know what we know so far. Finance team is going to meet for at least a little while this afternoon. We will have a vote. I've got, the attorneys are working between the bank and the city to make sure that the bank has an assurance from the attorneys that what we're doing is appropriate. We've, we've done one version of that letter. It's been looked at by Passamsek. It's gone back to our attorneys. I, that will all be worked out by Monday or Tuesday morning at the latest. The board of Passamsek will vote, I think Wednesday morning, assuming they vote to approve the loan. I, I think what I understand now is I will have to have warned at least the possibility of a special meeting. And I guess I just want to do a quick poll. We lost Carter, but of the other three of you, are you all available on Wednesday late afternoon or evening and what's better for you if we have to have a quick meeting to do a resolution approving this loan?
Yeah, the task force, we, let me see, 3:30 to...
Yes, 3:30 to 5:00. Good point. So this would probably be, we'd want to warn this for, no, earlier than 5:00 PM. We could do 5:00 or 6:00, whatever's work, what's better for you.
Yeah, it's 5:00.
Andy, will that work for you?
Yeah, if we could do, the later the better.
The later is better for you?
If we...
So, so maybe we just warn it for 6:00. Okay, so I will, I will clarify on Monday with the attorneys whether I'm reading their letter I just got today correctly and that we need to warn a meeting. If we do, I will, as has been my habit, inform all of you individually and then warn it publicly by Monday afternoon, 48 hours in advance of when that meeting would happen at 6:00 on Wednesday. And so one of two things will happen. I think the more likely scenario is we will have a meeting Wednesday night at 6:00. We'll discuss everything, look at the terms and make sure we're comfortable and vote a resolution to approve it. And then all of you who are here will sign it in person. And if Carter's still not back, we'll have to do it by DocuSign the next morning. And if, if for some reason I'm wrong and we don't need that, that meeting, I won't call it. We'll just send a DocuSign to each of you to sign off on the loan on Wednesday afternoon.
That is the first time saying hold it.
Yeah, I'm aware. We're right in the middle of it. There's nothing I can do. But thank you for the reminder because I'm supposed to be there too, so.
Right.
I gave up my personal life and my other work, my other jobs a long time ago, so. Okay. Everybody okay with this? Kevin, you're okay?
Yeah. Are we starting a meeting on Monday night?
No. No need for a meeting Monday night. So you can take that one off your calendars and our next regular meeting will still be July 7th. Any other comments from the community? I think somebody, some people signed up to speak. Do we have, moving on here to public comment.
Ann, you're all set? Lori?
I just wanted to say as a member of the finance committee that I hope that the citizens at large in the community here in Newport will, will really pay attention to what we're trying to do and not assume that we're not digging deep, that we're not trying our hardest to, to look at the budgets, to look at things that have been spent, that I believe all of us are committed going forward to really working with the council and really working through these things. And that's, I just wanted to say that because we don't need, we don't need our community to, to think that we're just sitting here twiddling our thumbs and not really paying attention because I can tell you that that's absolutely incorrect. And we will be starting to look at detailed transactions, where things are being spent, looking forward to working with Chip to find that other money, you know, so we have the right information moving forward.
Thank you, Lori. This person speaks my life. Any other comment?
No. I'm away from that.
All right. Any new business? Would just want to chime in, okay? Any old business? Stacy, you're okay with everything's happened? You got it all under control? Okay. I think we've already sent the next council meeting for July, the next regular meeting. We did that at our last meeting, so we're going to skip that. I would accept a move through adjournment.
I'll make that a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Send it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's over. Thank you, everybody.